Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022. At this time, I'll ask you please either silence or turn off your cell phones in respect to the decorum of the meeting. And now I'll ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, benevolent, just as well.
Okay, our next meetings will include Parks and Recreation Committee will meet on Tuesday, May 17th at 7:30 PM. That's tomorrow night here at the Town Office. The Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, May 31st, 2022 at 7:00 PM here at the Town Office. The Town Council, our next Town Council meeting rather, will be on June 6, 2022 at 7:30 PM. That will be here in the Town Office and it will be available via Zoom. So, our meeting is mostly focused on the budget tonight, but we will move through the process of the meeting as we do with all of our basic points. And so we turn to Ms. Ness, would you like to comment at this point regarding Carrot Court? Great. So if you could introduce yourself and let us know your street address and the floor will be yours through the timer here.
My name is Rebecca Ness. I reside at 4070 Carrot Court in Emmitsburg, Maryland. When myself and some other members of the HOA Board were doing the annual spring inspection throughout the development, we were noticing quite a few cracks, large cracks, like two inch or more cracks along the road. And I've only lived there for four years, but when we were doing the inspection, we ran into a few homeowners who have been there since the development was first built. I believe the first phase was in 2001. So these are 20-year-old roads and they stated they have never seen them patched or sealed. So I advised them that I would address that at the town meeting to inquire, you know, where is that even in the budget or why is the development being overlooked? Also, one thing we noticed is the light posts. Some look to have been repainted or perhaps they were added as they are shiny dark black. Other of them are very faded and gray, but they have like a little probably only like four inch spot where someone came through and possibly marked them as needing repaired. So we were, I would said I would address that. And then we had a few homeowners stating that if you're not aware, middle and high school pickup, the bus stop time is at 6:30 in the morning. With the time change, these kids are walking out and some of them, some of the parents were concerned that the lights are a little too far apart. If we could either put in additional light posts, or do we just need to look at the wattage of the bulbs? Do they need new bulbs put in them to possibly make them brighter? So I advised those were the main concerns that they had. My other issue, as we all know, Dan Ryan is expanding Brookfield along Irishtown Road. I don't know the exact legal law. So if any of you do, feel free to tell me. I do believe that if there is no shoulder, I mean, it's assumed that there should be no parking on the road. However, these construction vehicles are parking on the road, which I can understand. They don't want to park in someone's driveway that they're building the house, but they are there for eight hours plus at a time. The worst one, most you can go around, but the very last house, when you're heading into town, right at the crest, that road is not even wide enough for one car. If they're parking there, I'm basically forced to honk my horn until they come out and move it, or I'm forced to basically break the law, cross a double line at the top of a crest and just cross my fingers that no one's coming up because if they are, I'm at fault because I was on the wrong side of the road. So those were the issues that I told people I would bring to your guys' attention.
Thank you. So I'll walk through a couple of these that I can't answer. Just to give you sort of a heads up as members of the community have also brought some of these things to myself. So here's what I can share with you after talking to staff about these items. Some I don't know that I can speak to because they're new to me. Regarding paving, there is funding in the budget at present for the paving of Phase One in Pembroke Woods. And that was the result of some neighbors putting forward their concerns and requests and that helped get it the attention and hopefully we'll get the attention it needs this summer in the paving cycle. There are other, not Stonehurst, but Timber Mill Run will receive some attention also, I believe. Is that correct?
Stanhurst and Cul-de-sac to Cul-de-sac and Timber Mill Run, Brookfield Drive to the last speed bump past Huntley Circle.
Okay, thank you. So it's in the plan so long as the board tonight approves the budget. So I'm assuming that you want us to endorse the budget as I think we probably will. Moving from that to the light posts. That means Stonehurst, from one end of Stonehurst to the other end of Stonehurst. Correct. Not at this time. Those are, those are younger, but they will be in the cycle soon, I would imagine. But we have to put that forward to staff and then we'll hear back from staff on that. But Stonehurst would mean literally from the one court to the other court, all will be paved. Moving from there, the light posts, the actual physical post, some are lighter colors, some are darker colors. Staff is looking for a grant or they may have found a grant, I don't know, to replace all the light posts in town. So I know that's in process. The numbers on them, having talked to town staff earlier, you see the marking, okay, the marking represents a number that was put there from an early effort to identify the light posts as opposed to by street address. They'd put a number on it for the purposes of maintenance. So if someone were to report a light post, they would be asked, can you give us the number? And staff would go out and they would get it squared away with a new bulb. The brightness of the bulbs, I think that's one of those things where we haven't quite hit the Goldilocks point on the brightness. And I'll offer this, I can't speak to the issue you're having at Irishtown at the crest of the ridge, but what I do know, sort of coming up on the approach at night when it's dark, the last light post there is blinding. And I'm hoping, and I'm hoping we can maybe get a filter or something on that within the bulb. I know that's an expense, but I think it's necessary.
Mr. President, well, actually, this, I'm sorry, this ties into something that we discussed at the Planning, Planning Commission. Several months ago, there was concern that the new houses being built along Irishtown Road, wouldn't make, would they be too bright? Some individuals in Brookfield.
Mr. Sykes was one of them.
Was one of them, yes.
Sure.
Concerned about the brightness of the bulbs. And my understanding is they can actually be made to be brighter or dim. They can be adjusted. There's, there's some, something.
That means to do that. Okay.
I don't know how that works, but there's some issues in Frederick too that, that were similar to that, adjusting the brightness.
The last piece about parking and crossing over the double line, I'll hand that over eagerly to staff. So any thoughts staff regarding those items?
So there is no parking allowed on Irishtown Road. There's probably exceptions for the construction vehicles as they continue to work through the project. However, if there was one parked near the top of the hill, that should be asked to move. I will discuss that with Zach tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And let's see. All were on that spot in that neighborhood. There's a transition there from sidewalk to blacktop where the sidewalk was. Is that part of the plan?
I'll have to ask Zach tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not completely familiar.
Is this where we're local? Sorry.
You're talking about on Irishtown Road?
Correct. Yes. 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 Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, the mayor just said it's temporary.
Oh, it's temporary?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. All right. So moving from there, any other responses or thoughts from the board?
Other than we're just gonna have to find a happy medium on those streetlights because if not, we're gonna have to hire somebody to go around every day and readjust us. Cause you know, everybody's gonna want, I would want mine brighter. I want mine dimmer. I want mine turned off. I want mine turned higher, you know?
So currently, currently the only, and I did not, was not aware of the ones on Irishtown were dimmable. The rest of the lights throughout town are not. That is the part of the technology we are looking into with the street, with the grant. I think you have a dimmable one by your house.
Certainly I do.
Which we had asked for public comment if they liked that light or not. And nobody said anything. So.
I think it's the brightest light in town. I love it.
Right. And I think there's one, there's one else. Is it Carrot Court?
And I've heard more negative than positive about it from neighbors.
See, that's, that's.
Related to the brightness.
Right.
So.
But then go over a street to where the school bus stop is.
And it's right.
Brighter. Correct. So that's, that's what I'm saying. You're gonna, we've got to find that happy medium and, and put safety into, to be the first judge of that instead of people's personal preference.
Right. So Ms. Ness, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. And I'll ask this, please feel free to contact me, you know, pull me over, wave me down, or just shoot me an email. Happy to answer anything, especially for my neighborhood. But I'm glad you're here and I'm glad to hear from the HOA. So this is also appreciated. So I hope we answered your questions sufficiently. Great. Okay. All right. That's it. We have, that's all that we have at the moment for public comment. So at this time, we now turn to administrative business of which we have none. We have nothing for our consent agenda. And therefore now we turn to our agenda items. We have the consideration of the fiscal year 2023 Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract, the presentation and review of the fiscal year 2023 town budget for consideration. We have the pending approval of ordinance 2022-06, update the chapter 2.5030 salary structure for fiscal year 2023, and then we'll set the agenda for our next meeting. So that's the overview of our meeting. And now I turn to staff for our first item.
Thank you. We received the Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract for fiscal year 23 for the town of Emmittsburg. The contractual cost for FY23 is $271,470, which is about 9.78% less than the previous contract cost in fiscal year 22. The sheriff cites the decrease in the contract costs is due to a change in personnel. The rest of the contents of the contract have remained the same over the course of the years.
Do we need the board to accept the modification?
We need the board to accept the fiscal year 23 contract for the, the contract with Frederick County Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Just one question on that. Where are we? Where are we applying the cost savings?
Throughout the general fund?
Just various.
Right.
Nothing in particular.
Basically that reduced, if you remember from the first meeting, that public safety was the only department to decrease expenses. And that's due to this decrease. So it balances out throughout the rest of the general fund that there's less expenses there that then can be applied to other departments for increasing costs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Therefore, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero.
Just do have one comment on that.
Yes, sir.
I would really like to see us take that funding since it was for police protection and put that to the side for some overtime to, to put a bigger police presence here that first week of the new college year. To have weekend, a little more weekend coverage so we can kind of put our foot down, not put our foot down, at least the students will see a police presence around and maybe we can grab a hold of some of the stuff that's going on early in the year.
So if I might address that real quick, I believe there's already, my talks with the sergeant already, I believe there's already plans for that. But we can talk to them in more detail.
First week, first week back from school, weekend after fall break, Thanksgiving, first week back after Christmas, spring break. Those would be your five.
These are your dates?
Yeah.
And that comes from a man speaking from experience.
Yes. We have an insider here evidently.
Yep. And the end, it's end of all sports seasons.
I would humbly suggest sharing that with staff for that. Again, as a future point. Okay. Any further comments writing a first item? No? Okay. Number one, sorry. Return to item number two, agenda item number two, pardon me. Presentation and review of fiscal year 2023 town budget for consideration.
Good evening, commissioners. Staff is here tonight to present the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. We have a slide PowerPoint presentation that we want to present this evening that coincides with the budget notebooks that were handed out the last town meeting. Hopefully you've all gotten a, gotten some time to get yourself familiar with some of the numbers. And if you would have any questions, we'd like to try to answer those tonight. If we're not able to answer a question tonight, we will certainly find out the answer and get to you as soon as possible. But we'll go ahead and start with the PowerPoint presentation. First, we'll review the general fund revenues. The next couple of slides are the general fund revenues from the budgets for 2022 and the next slide is going to be 2023. This coincides with page three of your budget notebook. It's kind of a, it's a good summary of all the departments that we have revenues coming in for the general fund and also the different departments that we have expenses for. As you can see, last year for fiscal year 2022, the budget was right about 1.9 million spread over with revenue coming in from different sources such as taxes, licenses and permits, state and county revenues, service charges and miscellaneous revenues. For fiscal year 2023, the revenue has increased to a little over $2 million. And you can see the allocations that are made within the, the pie chart there. Some of the highlights of the revenue for the budgets for 2023 and some of the areas that have increased are, as you look at, this coincides with page five and six. Under taxes, we've increased the budgeted taxes that are coming in. One of the things we do for each of the revenue line items is we'll either have a source document that gives us an exact number from either the state or the county, or we'll make an estimate based on prior years' experience. This year, we tried to be a little bit more exact in some of the categories such as real estate taxes. In the past, we've been a little bit, been a little bit on the conservative side as far as not wanting to have the budgets as large as they maybe could be. And we tried to be a little bit more precise this year. Just overall, the taxes are actually, like I said, going to go from 1.9 million to a little over 2 million. You have your different sources. Major component of your, of your taxes that come in are your real estate taxes. And this is just a chart reflection of where we're at as far as real estate taxes slowly increasing through all the years. This is the general run, general fund revenue. Again, it just says that the, the slow increase over the years and the last two years there represented on the chart are the, the budgeted numbers for 22 and 23. The, the years prior are all actual numbers. One of the slides we wanted to show was the impact on revenue based on the COVID-19 epidemic. You can see the last year or so, especially last year in fiscal year 22, we had had a reduced budget based on revenues that we thought would come in. Luckily, and hopefully the good news, we're hoping that will start to increase again over the coming years. This next chart represents the revenue versus expenses for the general fund. You can see that over the past years, we've had revenues out, outdo expenses with the different years. And that way, typically each year will come back to you mid-year after the audit's done with a, with a transfer amount that we can have additional funds go to the capital projects fund. Now we'll look at expenses. General fund expenses for 2022. Again, last year, they were at the 1.9 million mark. Having the budget balance for fiscal year 23, the amount is at 2,000, 2,053,0217. There are all your various departments that we have that are in the notebook. Many of the line items are slowly increasing from one year to the, to the next, just based on inflation and things of that, things of that sort. You can see different areas where we spend most of the money for the town. One of the things, we'll start going through each of the departments. If you turn to page eight, Department 10, which is legislative and executive, you can see that from fiscal year 22 to 23, there's been a slight increase from about 137,000 to about 140,000. That's a 2% increase. And as we go through each of the departments, Ms. Willetts will highlight some of the line items that, that are in each of the departments that, that might be informative.
Cole, can I ask a question real quick?
Certainly.
It's not, it's not a big deal because the number actually comes out to the exact same, but under police for the fiscal year 2022, you had it up there as 302,822. So that was, that's 23.
Right.
Point two. Yep. So that's 302. And then agenda item number one, when we talked about it was 298, 22.
So.
The, the number comes out to be the exact same.
Yeah. So we did not have the sheriff's office contract last year when we planned the budget. So we estimated high based off of the continual percentage rate increase. So the slide from FY22 is what we budgeted. It wasn't actual. And that's why you're probably seeing the difference.
Yeah, the amount of change was the exact same, but I just wasn't sure.
Right.
Clerically if that affected anything.
No, that's, that's why that happened.
So under legislative, like, like we're saying, it went up slightly to 140,069. And Kathy will talk about.
Yeah.
The line items.
If there's any line items in particular that you have questions about in Department 10, I can try to address those. These are just some areas that we pulled out that we've talked about usually. So under 10, you have the special events, which is line item 6901. You'll see, let me switch my page, that we reduced that line item from budgeted fiscal year 22 from 12,125 to 6,825. Big difference is that we have, hey, we have purchased all the holiday decorations and then we no longer donate to the Boys and Girls Club. They have not had a need for it. So what's in that line item is what you'll see there. You have a hundred dollars for MHAA ribbon cutting. We have the $625 for the Holiday House decorating contest that we do in December. You have 2,500 just for general special events, 2,000 for National Night Out, and then 600 for a public shred event and a thousand dollars for an electronics recycling event.
Moving on to Department 12.
Were there any other questions in 10? Anything else?
Just for clarity's sake, I'm looking at administrative rentals, leases, 5311.
That's our copy machines.
Okay. So that's just leasing those. Thank you.
Any other questions on Department 10? Moving on to Department 12 Planning. That would coincide with page nine of the budget book. Last year's budgeted amount was about 170,000. This year it's 190,000. There's probably the big thing, and Kathy wants to talk about this, is.
Is it, and I believe Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Ritz both asked about it, was you'll notice that in fiscal year 22, we budgeted 17,000 in legal. If I jump back to the audited number for fiscal year 21, so the true number from, from fiscal year 21 was 30,428 spent in legal department or legal for Department 12. The continued increase in the planning department, therefore we budgeted $30,000 this year. Any other questions in 12?
Moving on to Department 13, financial. Last year's budget was at 199,000. This year it's at 209,000. Just slight increases. Then as you'll see with most of the departments, increases in the wages and the benefits lines that are at the top based on the staffing increases that we have from year to year. Some of those are based upon the home departments of the employees and others are based upon the allocated time that we anticipate staff having in those areas. Is there any questions concerning Department 13? Just slight increases in different line items, but not much, much change there.
15.
Under Department 15, as we move along, the Buildings Department, the budget for fiscal year 22 was 132,488. For fiscal year 23, it's increased to 138,726. So about $5,000 difference.
And go ahead. What I, what I'll mention, you'll see in the various departments, the predominant increase in buildings is the budgeting for the increase in oil and the increase in gasoline. We budgeted about a 25% increase across the board in oil and gas and hoping that that's enough. So that's what you're going to see in 15 and third, Department 30 and 40 and 50 are going to be the increases in, in those kind of items.
Yeah. And just to reiterate, reiterate, certain line items are in the different departments. One is the, is the oil propane and the vehicle expense that have to do with the, the cost of gas nowadays. Also, you'll see insurance lines will go up slightly in each of the departments. So there's, there's kind of a common theme through a lot of the departments when they have allocations of, of invoices. So moving on to, does anybody have any questions for Department 15 Buildings? I did like dance. And moving on to Department 20, on page 12 of the notebook, the budgeted notebook, the, the big factor here and the difference from year to year can be the contractual that you just approved for the, for the, the public safety for police. Department 20 is, will actually be reduced from budgeted amounts from about 303,000 down to about 276,000 because of the, the contract difference.
No.
And this, and this is reflected in the chart up here that we have on this slide. Under Public Safety Fire and Rescue, Department 21, each year we make a donation to the, to the fire department for that amount. And we've done that each year, year to year since, since I've been here and probably many years before. Under Department 22, Other Public Safety, it's slight increase from 13,300 to 15,200. Some of the, so there has been some allocation, additional allocations made to other public safety. Is there any questions with Departments 20, 21, or 22? Is there any questions with departments 20, 21, or 22? Moving on to department 30. Which is public work streets. In total, the public work streets has increased from about 438,000 to 482,000 for fiscal year 23. And we have certain line items we'd like to highlight tonight. Starting with the contractual line items.
Alright, so under contractual, we, we budgeted 12,000 for snow removal. In fiscal year 21, we only spent 4,000. I don't have the actual numbers for this fiscal year. We're just waiting for the bomb to drop on the snow. So we would like to keep that number at 12,000. Because all it takes is about one or two big snows and that'll use that up. We have a $7,000 base. And then we have budgeted $3,840 in parking enforcement. We have a lot of meters that we, I, I understand we have a five-year parking plan that the board, that's in front of the board, but we still have to replace some of these meters. And getting the parts is very difficult. Also with the new handheld device, we do have the ability to run most of our tags now. However, several states, we have to pay to have the tags run. That's estimated at about $250 a year. And then, like I said about us, and then we have general at about 7,000. 7,605 in contractual. Other expenses. Again, we do three, a thousand dollars for general, 600 in safety and a hundred dollars in parking enforcement. If there's any areas that you want me to break down or look at in 30, operating supplies, I won't read all through those. That line item increased by about $2,800. We are looking if the board passes the parking plan of purchasing parking boot, two parking boots, Amy. Two parking boots for $2,100. The rest of the line item stayed pretty much the same across the board. The only one, we did decrease salt. We're in good shape with that. And we increased our paint budget by 1,500 additional for stone as well.
Quick question. Do we still have a relationship with State Highway related to the salt? Terrific.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
That's been very beneficial. For repairs and maintenance in department 30, it was a slight increase of a thousand dollars. We have a thousand in sidewalks, 3,000 in parking enforcement, again for parts for our current meters. 400 in contingency and 750 in general.
Can I ask a question? Where does the streetlight repairs go?
Streetlights go under streetlight upkeep. We have budgeted $30,000. Did you have what page?
Page 13.
Page 13, it's the second one from the bottom. Streetlight upkeep. That's for all the streetlight pole, streetlights, poles, fixtures and bulbs.
I have a question. The, the, the new banners going on, where did you add that cost to?
The $5,000 for the brackets came out of fund two. The capital improvement projects out of 30.
Okay, I just want to work.
Yes.
Go up any.
No, it did not come out of the general fund because we didn't budget for it.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions for department 30 streets? No, sir. Moving on to department 31, refuge. We don't have a slide for that, but that's, that's essentially this, going to be the same. That's page 14 of the budget notebook. The increase is, I believe, almost about a hundred dollars. Our contract for the refuge is, I think, the same this year.
Right. Our contract's good through, up until fiscal year 24. So we'll have to put it back out to bid next, next year.
So that makes this department nice because there's no large increase. Moving on to department 60, parks. Fiscal year 22, total was a little over $224,000. Fiscal year 23, the total's 265,000. Some of the ones we want to highlight are, are on the next couple of slides.
Right. So department 60 for operating supplies, the line item increased about $500. We have $2,000 for the pool, particularly because they're still required to do cleanings for COVID as far as we know. So there's additional cleaning supplies that would needed to be purchased. A thousand for the park building, 750 for the dog park, $500 for signs, and then $1,600 for general.
One line item I'd like to, to, to point out is under the insurance account 5308. You can see the slight increase from fiscal year 22 to 23. And like I said, in other departments, you can see that slight increase throughout the budgets, unfortunately.
I have a question. Now disinfecting, are we disinfecting the park equipment still?
No, we are not doing the park, park equipment any longer.
Then hopefully we won't have to do the pool. Only reason why I'm saying is when they do the pool, they shut the pool down. And everyone leaves and we lose all that.
That's up to the county. It's, I, I, from what I understand from the whole company, and Amy can correct me if it's wrong. It's dependent on what county and what state they're working in. They have to follow their guidelines. I don't know. Have we heard from this, the county yet, Amy? We haven't heard anything yet. I know they're up there working now.
So the, I'm sorry, I'm just wondering, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. The signs funding, the $500 for the side for signs. Is that for, if a sign were to become damaged, we're able to replace it? Or is it for new signage or temporary?
Yeah, it's both.
Okay.
Any general signs in the park?
Will any of these signs be posted on South Seaton or on Main Street, for example, like directing to the community park facilities or memorial park facilities?
No, these are actual signs for the park. This would, I know Ms. Shaw is working on a grant for, it's called TRIP, and it's more for signage along roadways, directing people to like areas in town and historic areas and wa, the walking tour, et cetera.
Okay. I'm asking that because what we had in the comprehensive plan was the intent to, a sort of a unified sign program. So we had sort of, we had a consistency of the message. So there was clarity. Will that be part of the grant funding? Or will we be funding that at a later time? Or?
I believe that's part of the grant funding. I'd have to get with, with Maddie and double check on it.
Okay, it's just, when we hear the commissioners express concerns about parking and sometimes I hear about people having trouble with amenities, I think that's.
Yeah, this is particularly just for the parks itself.
The parks. Okay, alright. Thank you.
Moving on to the next slide, repairs and maintenance, there's slight increase for this coming fiscal year.
Repairs and maintenance increased by about $4,000. Based off of meetings with the director of public works, there's increased monies needed to take care of the grounds. So that's increased to 3,000 for the grounds, 1,500 for the equipment. The pool is increased by about 1,000 up to 6,000. Park buildings up to 2,000, 4,000 for the ball fields, 4,500 for the playgrounds. That includes the maintenance on the sun shades at the all-accessible playground. 750 for the dog park, 1,000 for contingency and 2,000 in general. As you'll see, and it, we're finding out as we go through this budget, that all these projects are costing more. Budget things that we planned for six to eight months ago are now, the pricing's increased. So we're increasing line items where we feel that we're going to feel the most impact or where we're already seeing it.
On the dog park, I had some, so this is complaining about their animals have got sick from the dog park, from the. I'm nervous if, if the, the matting. There are the chips or whatever is down for the, for them to walk on can be sprayed or something. It's got bacteria or something and it's, they're getting.
It's, I, I'll have to check with Jimmy on that. I mean, we, we're doing the same processes we've done since it opened, the same mulch, any spraying that they've done. Everything's been the same. There's, you know, not to, there's no way to know that that's exactly where they got sick, but I'll have Jimmy look into it.
Okay.
Um.
I only had a couple of people calling me about it.
Yeah, so I'll talk to him and see what we can do. I know we're looking at putting a camera up near the dog park because of mischievous behavior as well as the blocking of the water fountain continuously happening. So we'll definitely look into it. No, I mean, I don't want that.
Another slide we'd like to highlight is account 690, 6901 special event program cost.
Alright, special events and programs, it went up by about $2,000. We have a thousand dollars for the farmer's market. This includes the ads that are run in the Emmitsburg News Journal and the Catoctin Banner. $60 or about 135 dollars for signs, 2,000 for three pool parties, which is the same. We budgeted 4,450 for community functions. 750 for turkey trot, 1,220 for Arbor Day and $2,500 for Green Fest. And then budget a hundred dollars for the community garden and $500 in general. Any other questions in department 60?
No, ma'am. If you turn to, in your notebook, to page 16 of the budget notebook, it outlines the debt service that we have in the general fund. Happy to say that we don't have any debt outstanding for the general fund at this time. Department 75, there also highlights the, the enter fund transfer for the budget. That amount is 172,350, of which we'll detail in the next couple of slides. This would be your transfer to the cap, fund to capital projects. In your capital projects fund. And have Ms. Willis talk about the projects that are coming up for the town.
So these are actually not necessarily fun two projects. However, these are ones, the tentative projects for fiscal year 23 that staff has either started working on or will continue to work on or have submitted grants for. We're going to continue the sidewalk connections throughout town, the ADA ramps. The stormwater basin retrofit in Silo Hill, the tree plantings for MS4. The daughters of charity property near the wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Shaw is continuing to work on, with the mayor on the historic walking tour brochure and webpage. That'll be throughout town. We just recently submitted those four, three projects of parking lot funding at Rainbow Lake. Ms. Shaw submitted a grant through program open space. She also submitted a grant for the storybook trail in community park as well as cornhole boards. Or not boards, cement boards on cement or concrete patio in community park near the horseshoe pits. And then we're going to continue moving forward with the bathroom concession stand at community park.
This next slide coincides with pages 18 and 19 of your budget book.
Can we go back just for a sec before we jump over? Mr. Davis, you had talked about the storybook trail. Is this upon the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee?
Yes.
Great, okay. And the parking lot at Rainbow Lake with program open space funding. Will that be expanding the blacktop or will be pushing on to the field?
It would be, from what I understand, it's making a new parking lot. So if you're facing Rainbow Lake and the walkways here, where I guess some events have been held, creating a parking lot right there, an asphalt parking lot.
Wow.
To the right of that.
Sure.
Trail.
Any guesses to how many spaces?
I would have to look at a grant. I know the grant request is 150,000. If you give me a minute, I'll look it up to tell you how many spaces.
I'll, I'll follow up. Sure, they'll follow up afterwards. This is nice to hear. I know this, the discussions took place, but I didn't know that it had been moved forward formally. So that's appreciated. Because there's a very strong need for it.
Yes.
We've been asking for that since I was 18 years old. They wouldn't give it to us back then.
Well, the mayor has to go in and fight at the next program open space meeting. So see if we can get the money.
Moving on to the next slide, capital projects fund to transfer. This is a pie chart of all the, the proposed allocations into the capital projects fund from the excess of fund one. If you turn to page 18, this coincides with page 18 and 19 of your budget book. And looking at those pages, you see on the left-hand side, the, the different departments that, that we have for the capital projects. And you can see the various line items. There's three columns to the right of the, of the capital projects departments titles. The first one is the current balance. That is what's currently been allocated to each of those individual line items. The second column is the proposed budget. On page 19, if you look at the very bottom, you see that that adds up to 172,350. And then the third, the third column would be the proposed balance after, if those line items are approved. And I'll let Ms. Willis speak a little bit about the, certainly let her talk about the transfers and the different areas that we'd like to allocate to.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go down the line items there. For fund two, we're proposing a transfer in the amount of $5,200 to purchase a new meeting room projector. We've been having, it's worked well tonight, but we've been having a lot of difficulties with the projector in here. And, and talking to the gentleman that take care of our system, that that's an old system and it's getting more difficult to repair, to fix. Stormwater management, we're asking for a transfer in the amount of $50,000. I have some notes from Zach. So that would bring that line on a line item, excuse me, up to 383,317. If the board approves the $50,000 transfer. This will go towards the Silo Hill Pond retrofit, the pollution prevention plan project. The mandatory yearly employee training, the yearly outfall inspections. The completion of the stormwater management utility feasibility study. $25,000 for street sweeping, the stormwater management utility implementation. Yes, that is, will use up most of the 383,000 in fund two. $30,000, excuse me. So then, moving down to buildings. For Christ Community Church, we would like to budget an additional $10,000. The roof needs to be repaired, replaced, as well as new gutters. That's part of our commitment to the building. The estimates are plus upwards of $50,000 to $60,000 to conduct that. So we wanted to add an additional 10,000 to cover that repair that we're hoping to put out to bid either late summer or early fall. $5,000 into 22 East Main Street to replace a wall that is starting to fall down. 15,000 for 300A South Seaton Avenue for this building. We have to paint the stairwell in the gym as required with our contract or our agreement with Frederick County. We did get some bids to, to begin that work after the budget's passed, if approved by the board. 30,000 for vehicles. As I mentioned to Commissioner Ritz and Commissioner Davis, that right now we have money set aside in, in fund two for vehicles. However, if you recall, we purchased a backhoe and a four by four truck through USDA's Public Works Grant. And that we did have a cash match to those, which is roughly about $75,000. So that will reduce that line on to where it is. It's been town practice for as long as I've been here and under previous administrations that $45,000. $45,000 was put into vehicles to plan for the future. As vehicles continue, prices and continue to increase. We're seeing trucks now upwards of $60,000 that you don't want to have to fund the entire project if need be. But you already have money set aside. It's the same concept with paving, which. For paving, dropped on a paving, we budgeted 50,400 or transfer for 50,400. For paving, and again, as we talked earlier, on the, on the schedule right now. Outside of smaller projects or Stonehurst Court, Robin Dale Drive and then. Timber Mill Run and if, if monies allow, part of Silo Hill as well. Which is Robin Dale Drive. 3,500 for signs, that's to replace the two new, or replace. And get two new welcome to Emmitsburg signs that have been damaged and destroyed. One was, it was torn up by a windstorm. And then, am I missing anything else here? Parks. We have 10,856 in Park and Rec Equipment Upgrades, and that was to balance the line item. Projects that were applied for about a year ago, once the plot project was completed due to ongoing inflation. Things just ended up being more costly than what originally budgeted for. The same thing with the bandstand to, to. Balance out that line item. $10,000 in department sixty under nine 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 for. 7,000 or for tree removal in Emmett Gardens. According to Mr. Click, there are several trees that are a hazard that need to be removed in Emmett Gardens. And then the interfund transfers are basically monies that are moved from different line items to cover. Costs elsewhere, so $30,000 for planning, if you see under interfund transfers, that was moved to the ADA ramps. $12,000 in impact fees was moved to paving. And then the 23,362 in Parks Grant Matches is what was used to balance out. The negative line items for the bandstand and then Park and Rec Equipment.
Are there any questions on the proposed fund to transfer amounts from fund one to fund two?
I have a few, Mr. President.
Yes, I go ahead, Mr. Ritz.
First off, thank you for clarifying some, I had some questions prior, prior to, and I. Thank you for your quick response to my, to my questions. I do appreciate it. I'm looking right now, though, it, this is on page eighteen under Capital Projects for Department. Twelve. As I specifically asked a question about the stormwater management inner fund transfer there and. There would be more information forthcoming tonight, which it was, thanks. I'm, I'm looking though, part of that $50,000. Ms. Wells, I think it was Ms. Wells that said, the outfield inspections.
Right.
Is part of that. I know there was some discussion a few months ago with Mr. Golden. Due to the town, town responsibility of inspecting stormwater. Upon outfields and county doing the same thing, I think it's a triennial basis. There might be a reduction in that, and that's, that's what I was. Questioning tonight when Seth was mentioned.
Right, so he has budgeted, and I don't know what, I apologize, I don't know what he has budgeted for outfalls from the previous years. But for fiscal year twenty-three, he has budgeted 3,700 for outfall inspections. And you are correct that we are no longer duplicate, duplicating inspections with the county.
I guess my, that's great, great, good to hear, 3,700, I'm assuming that probably came down then significantly. Is it best then to follow up? Unless we pass it tonight, if we do not pass the budget tonight for me to follow up with Mr. Golden on that.
Yes.
Okay. Two more questions, one related to Department fifteen. This building, the $15,000 is part of our contract to paint the, the. Stairwell to the gym, was it?
The stairwell in the gym, yeah, so behind the gym, there's actually a stairwell that's never been paid attention to, apparently.
Now, re- remind me again, though, if the individual wants to use the gym, they come to the town office to fill out a form, or do they have to go through the county?
So we, we manage all the reservations for the gym, so they would start here. And then we would sign off on it if it's one of the allowable uses, and then it gets sent to the county for final approval.
Okay, I guess part of me just wonders why that was written into the contract that we'd be responsible for that stairwell.
So basically the contract, it's got a checklist, so negotiations failed on the lease and the rent amount. So we're kind of back to where we were, where we, we pay a dollar a year and we are. Responsible for X number of things in this building. One of the things that we are responsible for is painting. And that area has not been painted in many, many years, and it was one of the ones we got a, a negative mark on from the county.
Incorrect assumption on my part. I thought it was just the office area that we were.
No, it's the whole building that we are responsible for managing.
Got it. And then it was just one more, but if you have a question related to that, go ahead.
I was wondering about all the empty offices downstairs that get on the bottom floor, doesn't get used. There's a lot of rooms downstairs, don't get rude.
As far as I know, they're, the health department is using their rooms. Head Start is using, Parks and Rec is coming back this summer, so they will be using their rooms. I don't, is the senior center open yet? I don't know if the senior center is open yet. They utilize two large rooms down there also.
I'm in on this time. I know the senior center uses on that side, but.
Yeah, the health department, yeah, the health department uses the, like this wing down in the basement.
Because the bathrooms and stuff don't hardly get used enough.
Right, they're not down there very often, right.
So we have to paint all that and everything?
No, no, just the gym and the stairwell, and then we have to touch up, we have a bunch of areas. Steve's been going around painstakingly touching up areas throughout the whole building that. They found us. To not do well, but they are also here doing a lot of work right now also.
Thank you.
And, and my final question was related to streets, Ms. Ness left the room. So we have a schedule of streets to be paved. I meant to ask this earlier, when, when Ms. Ness brought up Carrot Court. When is that on the schedule?
I would have to talk to Mr. Click. He maintains a schedule for, you know, X number of years out. And these three were added to the schedule that they were in the most need. I will ask him where Carrot Court ends up. On it, I, I don't know.
Mr. Ritz, I would speculate purely 2025, assuming that. Phase two would be paved next, and then phase three, which is Carrot Court, would be paved last in the development. And of course, that's hypothetical, but. I think that would be. A reasonable assumption.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up, and I'll, I'll let you know.
Are there any additional questions on fund one or fund two at this time?
Just more of a comment about the stormwater management, that's. The, the $50,000, I'm, I'm okay with it, I understand, but I, I would like to see a plan on how we're meeting that. Stormwater management, how we get our points, what, how many points of street sweeping given us? Because I really, really, really don't want to see us do one point over what we're mandated to do. And it's, you know, I, I trust you, but I just want to see it because. You know, sometimes when we get a, a project that we feel really, really good about, we, we start going above and beyond and. The University of Maryland people were very clear to us that you get no extra credit, and we're supposed to do 10 points. And we do 30 points, well, thank you for the extra 20, but you get no credit towards next year. So I don't want to see those giving any more than we, than we have to.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll work on that. A comment for the street sweeping, we did, when we put it out to bid, we did. Put it out to do the entire town once a month, however, it was not affordable. It came in in excess of 50,000, so we've had to cut back what street sweeping. We're going to do at least for this next fiscal year, but I'll work on that and see if maybe we can get a. Maybe an admin item once we're done with the budget, admin item as an update to the MS four permit to show where we're at.
Can we get a price or maybe a sweeper so we can see how much it would cost in future for one or?
Yeah, we did. We, we priced a street sweeper. Over $500,000. Yeah, because we did consider that. So.
We definitely grant money for that.
Right. I, I don't.
There could be, I would assume.
Might be. Right now, we, we did the grants for the stormwater retrofit. I mean, there might be a time where we look at a grant for that also, maybe USDA will come out with another public works grant.
I know anecdotally, I've spoken with John Canard about that with Thurmont splitting the expenses there. They had been in the market for one also, so I thought.
If there's no further questions on fund one or fund two, we'll move on to the water budget. Which is Department forty, or Fund Four in the accounting system. Water revenue, the next slide represents the water revenue that you see over the past several years. The, the spikes in the water revenue, well, let me step back for a second. Typically, the utility charges that we, that we charge and receive revenue for over the years are fairly consistent. When you see the spikes on the chart there, they represent different years that we've taken in. The town has taken in tap fees for new, new buildings, so that really helps with. The amount of revenue a town gets. I believe this year we have ten houses. Budgeted for, for tap fees underwater. Fiscal year twenty-two budget. To fiscal year twenty-three, just increases slightly, going from 562,000 to 566,000. We see slight increases. And one thing on the utility charges, one of the line items has been. Has been budgeted a little higher. We see that people are starting to go back to different businesses and using more water, you know, especially FEMA. So it's a good sign for the, for the town. This next slide represents the water expenses for the past several years. You can see how it's just increased slightly over different years. And continues to increase slightly from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. Budgeted last year was at about a $712,000. This year, the budget's roughly 740,000. That's represented at the very end of the slide there.
Is the majority of the fund, sorry, is the majority of the funding here representative of salaries?
Well, it's various, with the water, both the water and the sewer funds, there are a lot of different line items. If you look at page twenty-four, you'll have twenty-four and twenty-five, it details the, the water fund. Just in various areas, there's different things. You know, wages and benefits are a portion of the total budget and. Do tend to increase each year. But other areas also increase.
I just know that we've had this competitive market and the retention of staff has been an issue. The other day I saw a bonus that was set up by a municipality in Montgomery County, and I was kind of stunned at the bonus that they were offering. And I don't know if we have to resort to that, or is that in discussion on our?
So. I'll talk about staffing just real quick. As you know, we did hire. Warren Hartley as a water and sewer operator, he's doing fantastic. Unfortunately, we have been unable to hire anybody to replace Ryan Keeney who was let go. So we pulled the ad, we were going to rerun the ad again at the end of May. To see if we can get anybody, colleges are getting out, people are coming home, hopefully we can draw from it. I mean, the town has a good, I mean, the town offers a competitive salary, your benefits are outstanding, the, the compensation for health. Benefits is, I think we've got a very desirable package. Location may be part of it, and it's very difficult, and talking to Amanda. When you have Frederick City hiring the same position, you had Thurmont hiring the same position, you had Middletown hiring the same position. That's four municipalities trying to hire for the same position. Our salary outside of Frederick City is very comparable. To all of them. It's just the market right now.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next slide. This is, slide shows the water revenues and expenses, 2013 to current. You can see that over the past handful of years, unfortunately, expenses have outweighed revenues in each of the years. Now we'll talk about some of the line items.
I, I'll note just one thing on the revenue for the water department. Is there is no, and I think Zach mentioned this, there is no logging revenue in fiscal year twenty-three. The main employee from the state has retired and they have been understaffed, so he's been unable to come out and mark an additional stand. Our hopes is to continue the project in fiscal year twenty-four. For Department forty, again, if there's any line items you want to go over, I'll be more than happy to. I just pulled out some that we may, I thought you want to talk about. Contractual increase slightly by about a little under 4,000. We spend 8,500 in the lab, which is an increase this year because this year we're required to do lead and copper testing. I believe that is every three years, we spend about $6,000 on leak detection. 20,000 on the algae control. 13,225. Is just general, that includes mowing at Rainbow Lake. Some HR expenses, and we have budgeted an extra $5,040 to pump the tank at 8533 Hampton Valley Road this year. We'll talk about operating supplies, operating supplies this year did decrease by about 7,000. Based off the equipment that was needed at the plant. We have the 500 in equipment, 5,500 for lines and piping. 20,865 at the water treatment plant. The staff was very specific on their needs this year, what they needed to maintain the plant. Hundred dollars for wells, 3,500 for the lab, about 13,000 for water purchased through the mount. 5,500 for tools, 2,500 for new, or for meters and parts and $1,800 for general. Chemicals, chemicals at the water plant have consistently stayed roughly about 32,000. This year we budgeted a slight increase. Main increase is going to be in the DE, the diatomaceous earth. That's been increased from 4,250 to 7,000. Basically because of the condition of the lake. When we are in a drought, the lake is very difficult to treat and we have to use more DE to treat the water. And that's where you see. Most of the increase in chemicals. You see, that's just the chart showing where we are with the chemicals. Over the years. At the water plant. For the LG Sonic or algae control, basically this shows you the amount of backwash water. That's essentially wasted to make. A clean gallon of water, so in 2016, you'll see that we were essentially wasting about 1.3 million gallons of water. Backwash water, and it slowly decreased over the years. LG are for twenty, you'll see the low number in twenty-one, that's only because we reported January. Of 2021 to April of 2021, which is in your cold weather, your lake is very easy to treat at that point. Right now, from April 21. To, as you'll see here, the note for 22, from April 21 to April 2022. We typically deploy our LG Sonic. We typically deploy our LG Sonic about March or April. However, due to satellite upgrades, it was not deployed till June of twenty-one, so we were a little behind in getting the benefit from the LG Sonic that year. Twenty twenty-two, right now, our yearly average is about eight hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons a year, which is a significant reduction from twenty sixteen. Water savings, this is just to kind of show you where we are for April twenty-one to April twenty-two. So in twenty sixteen, as I mentioned in the previous chart, we were we were backwashing about one point three million gallons a month. Currently, we are backwash is eight hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons per month. Essentially, we're saving three hundred and ninety-eight thousand gallons per month of water. If you divide that out, that's the equivalent of about thirteen thousand, forty-nine gallons per day. And with the state mandate of two hundred and fifty gallons per day, essentially, you're saving fifty-two taps from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two. This large in part to the LG Sonic, but it's also in part to a testament to the staff and the improvements the board has approved over the years that we're able to fine tune our processes. And then with the adaptation, with the construction of the clarifier, we will see this number increase as well for tap savings. I think I have that, I have a slide on that. I think from my recall, it's estimated to go out to construction bid in July of this year. Repairs and maintenance for water in this decreased by about thousand dollars. You'll see where we spend our money. We budget a thousand, the mountain rental properties. We typically don't spend that. If we spend anything, we have what's fifty dollars? That should be five hundred for equipment. Twelve thousand, five hundred for distribution and collection lines. At the water treatment plant, about nineteen thousand, seventeen thousand, six hundred for the storage tank. Five thousand for the wells. We need to replace one of the pumps this year. Five hundred for the lab, seven hundred and fifty for contingency and seven hundred and fifty for general. And any, any questions with the water, any line items specifically in the water department? These are the current fiscal year twenty-three infrastructures projects that we continue to work on. Ms. Shaw has applied for MDE funding for DePaul Street. It's estimated cost, again, this estimate was is about two years old. So we're probably behind. About one point one million for DePaul Street. Zach conducted the low income survey. We should be able to apply for about eight hundred thousand dollars towards construction costs in a grant for DePaul Street. North Seaton Avenue is budgeted about one point one three million. The septic system that we would like to install at Hampton Valley Road, eighty-five thirty-three, our rental property is estimated to be about forty thousand. The cost for the water clarifier has increased due to inflation, supply chain, everything going up. It's estimated to be about two point four million dollars now. So we've budgeted, we received a million dollars from the state. And then we have one point four million from the American Rescue Plan monies that we can put towards water clarifier. Water meter replacement, this is just an ongoing project we've been doing for years. We we budget about twenty-five thousand dollars to upgrade and replace old meters throughout town. Here's the updates. So for DePaul Street.
I want to ask you if you could go back for a moment. Excuse me, I'm looking at the property on Hampton Valley Road, the septic system upgrade. Is that necessary prior to, for example, selling the home or selling the property?
So it's twofold. So staff spends a lot of time emptying the tanks. Right now, we're gonna, if the budget's approved, we will sign a contract for an outside vendor to pump the tank. It's about four hundred and fifty dollars a month to pump the tank. In speaking with staff, particularly Dan and Jared and Jimmy, and also conferring with the mayor that it's a beautiful house, it's on a beautiful piece of property. The desire to purchase a house where you have to pay a contractor to come pump your holding tank is is less than desirable, that if we could commit the money to put in a septic system. One, we don't have, we don't have to pump it anymore or hire a contractor. And two, it will make the house more desirable if the town desire. Chooses to
Sure, to sell.
Sell it.
Okay.
And this is not, this doesn't have to be done, you know, right now. It's something that we would like to. So it would be considered an asset project. It would come out of your asset fund, not out of the water fund that you're looking at right now. So it's a project we want to get on the books that we can complete.
So moving from there to the water clarifier, the American Rescue Plan funds. I'll use Mr. Briggs's favorite term. Is there another tranche of money?
Yes, so there's, yes, there'll be another tranche that comes through in September of this year in the amount of about one point five million. And you will see, once we get to sue the sewer, the Creamery Pot, Creamery Road Pump Station has gone up by about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and is there a third tranche?
No.
Just two?
Just two.
Just the two. Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick thing on on that. Whenever mind, you're gonna talk about it the next, uh, go ahead. I'll I'll jump in a bit.
Okay, so just, I just wanted to give a quick update. I know these these infrastructure projects are on everybody's minds. For the water department, we have current, three current infrastructure projects. You have the DePaul Street Water Line. The preliminary engineering report has been completed and submitted to USDA. The funding request has been submitted to MDE. We have not been notified yet. Staff will apply for DC HD funding based off a low income housing for construction, the max of eight hundred thousand. If need be, staff will apply for additional funding through USDA. Or if there's American Rescue Plan monies left over. North Seaton Avenue, the the preliminary engine report again has been completed and submitted. Funding request has been submitted to MDE and if need be, we will apply for USDA funding. The water clarifier, seventy percent of the design is complete. They anticipate putting it out to bid for construction in July of twenty twenty-two. Total project cost estimated two point four million with five hundred thousand dollar increase due to increases in material pricing.
So yeah, Mike, it was, it was tied to the North Seaton Water Line, obviously, you know, all these sources of funding. And then ultimately, I guess scheduling everything would have to go through state highway due to it being a state route. Now granted, I I live on North Seaton. I can't wait till we get a new new water line, increase our pressure, but I'm assuming this will also be tied to the Green Street Project to provide less disruption all around.
Yes, that's the plan is to, for the timing. I believe Zach said he's gonna apply for his grant, I think, spring or summer of next year. Which according to him, our project has to be ready to go when he submits for grant funding. So we've got a lot of legwork, obviously, to do yet. So that's that's the plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm, yeah, I remember him saying twenty-four, twenty-five potentially for that, so, all right. Thank you.
When they put the water line in, are they replacing all the water services to the property lines? What they're gonna do? You know? All new copper service.
Right, I I I
I think most of.
I believe the service line, I think it's all, I think it's the main line and service lines. I have to look into that, Commissioner. I'm not I can't recall off the top of my head.
And then the fire hydrants don't work down that way and the signs.
Right, a lot of this is for fire flow because we don't, we're lacking. Okay. These are future capital improvement projects that are on the horizon. They're all kind of in talking to staff, what we anticipate through the preliminary engineering report for DePaul Street and North Seaton Avenue. There will be a need for a water storage tank. Timeframe next two to three years could potentially be pushed out further. Water main, water, West Main Street Water Line Replacement. That is in the next three to five years. The Emmett Gardens Water Treatment Plant, again, we say the next five years. It depends on development. It depends on how well the clarifier performs and the need for the water storage tank. The Waynesboro Pike Water Line Replacement next five to seven years. Again, these next two, North Seaton Avenue North, and that's from North Gate out, those two are pending. Because they are outside the town limits, USDA will not fund those projects because they're outside of the the priority funding area. And the code is very clear on work done outside of town. So those are two that we'll have to work through, but those are anticipated projects down the road.
Is that for the houses across the bridge?
It would be from North Gate. Yes. Some of them do have water. They do have water.
And the business too.
And they're 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 pressures very low.
It's what, it's a two inch line in it, yeah.
Yes.
Are there any additional questions for the Fund Four Water Department?
I'd just like to see us move the Waynesboro Pike Replacement up a little bit. I mean, the people are paying for water and we know those lines out there are are just crap.
So I have reached out to Leslie because there was an issue brought up with the Mountain View Road Line. There is a clause in there that no work can be done outside of town. New lines can't be put in, or we kind of have to pay them back. That's just like in a nutshell what it says. So I have Leslie, I I asked her to look into how we do this and how we get around, you know, not doing work basically outside of town. The argument is they already have water. We already, they already have a water service.
Yeah, but the lines, the, you know, we know the lines, the the ones on Waynesboro Pike are being band-aided every time they have a leak and if we're selling people water, we gotta make sure it's good.
No, and I and I don't disagree with you, but you know, I gotta make sure that we follow like the legal side of the code that says you can't do any, you know, new lines outside of town. Well, technically, they're not new lines. So it, we are working on it. It is on our radar. But West Main Street is in town. And then the Emmett, the Emmett Gardens Water Treatment Plant, depending on development, could be pushed down even further as we continue to improve. The wa- water storage tank is number one. It has to be number one. That's getting sent to USDA as part of this preliminary engineering report. Again, these are just tentative. They're they're our best guess. And if there's a need to move something up higher, then we certainly can move it up higher.
Okay, and I don't see, I remember we had a conversation about the main lines coming off the mountain. About not being in the greatest of shape.
Right.
And there's nothing on there for that.
That's, that's basically, you're talking millions of dollars. So.
Well, if the water can't get off the mountain, though, we don't need the other lines.
Well, there's I I and I defer to Dan and Jimmy, the experts in that. And so there's a lot of different things that we've looked at with the preliminary engineering report, and that was one of the solutions to the problem with fire flow. The the best recommendation at this time, the quickest recommendation would be the water storage tank. But I'll talk to Jimmy and Dan about the the mountain line, but.
No, I was just, we we had a conversation that it was getting in bad shape. We were starting to get some leaks. And then it was gonna need to be replaced. I didn't know if we had anything in the the planning stages. I mean, we don't want to wait until it's then, and we don't have any water at all. So I think.
They might want to start putting money back like we're due for the equipment and stuff to help with the cost later.
Well, that's, that's what your water, so you have the enterprise fund, you have, you know, you have your water, you have your water budget, and then you have the enterprise fund, which is where your money. And and Cole can probably explain it better. So any project, large projects like this, they're not actually in the budget. They're asset items that are taken out of, if you want to explain.
The the main thing is that they have a funding source to to pay for the project itself. When, once that's secured, the the project that large, that that expensive would be set up as an asset and you, it would increase your depreciation expense from year to year going forward. But the main thing is to have the 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 funding and to try to secure the funding to to cover any type of new project like that. So if you the the resources you have have to be allocated out to different projects. Certainly, if you have a new project and you have to decide where you want that, where the important, where the importance of that is compared to all the other projects.
If if the the mount would go through with their new water treatment plant, would that help us any with water? Would we be able to buy more water off of them and maybe save some expenses?
So as far as I understand, I had an initial meeting with with the mount, and I believe the mayor and I have one next week to go over what their, what their plan is. I I know they're talking about new lines. What the, if the town can assist with anything, and so they were just in the beginning stages and I guess they're starting to move forward. So we have a meeting with them next week.
Yeah, I was talking to somebody from the mount. They said they were, they were doing something. And that would, that might be able to save us. It'd probably be cheaper to buy water from them than do some of these other big projects until we got our infrastructure straight.
So, yeah, so we talked about that at the staff level, and if if that's something that we want to pursue. It's my understanding from from Dan that that line will then have to be replaced. The one on, the one that connects to the mount, that one needs to be replaced. Yeah, Scott Road. Yeah, I mean, I wish there was an endless pot of money and we can just do all the infrastructure projects and, you know, we do our best to pick which ones need to be done right away. So we'll continue to look at them all and and, you know, I appreciate everybody's input, you know, because a different set of eyes might, you know, might have a different opinion.
Mr. Davis, for the next budget, not this year's, but the twenty twenty-four budget, would you want to see the mountain line added as a forthcoming project? So we at least have that institutional memory.
Yeah, I think we need to put it out there somewhere so it's there and we can.
And it's visible.
It's in the preliminary, I believe, if if the contractor included it, I need to read the preliminary engineering report because I just got it today. From my understanding, they have to provide options to USDA. And so that might already be in there. I I haven't read it yet. I know their number one recommendation is the storage tank. The lines on the mountain, I don't know if they included it in there or not. I'll have to look at, look at it tomorrow.
The storage tank question, would that be slated in town limits or would that also be on the mountain with the other tanks?
No, there's a couple of different locations in town based off that elevations that would be the best locations for it.
Okay, Irish Town Road perhaps, as given the elevation or?
Silo Hill.
So, okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Potentially. I don't really want to stir anybody up, so there's a couple of different locations that we're looking at.
Understood, okay.
I don't want them knocking on my door.
You know, I'm, I'm on board if it helps, you know, abate fire. Just saying.
Any other?
Any other question?
No, sorry, move forward.
The water department?
Thank you.
Moving on to the sewer department or the sewer fund. This PowerPoint shows the revenue for the past several years. Fiscal year twenty-two will go from a thousand twenty-eight, one million, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred to fiscal year twenty-three budget of a million, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred. Increases, we anticipate some increases in the utility charge use of the town. This chart here represents, you see the big the activity that was in fiscal year fourteen and some in fourteen mostly. That was the revenue that we got from the state of Maryland to build the wastewater treatment plant. So that's the the difference there. Under sewer expenses, fiscal year twenty-two, we have, we had a hundred, about a hundred eight hundred and fifty-three thousand. This year, we anticipate nine hundred fifty-three thousand. And we'll go over some of the line items for that, but that represents that PowerPoint.
In the last graph, does that decrease in the cost relate to the?
Actually, the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three are the are the budgeted amounts that we have.
Understood.
Prior years, those are the actuals. Thank you, so. Sewer revenue and expenses. You can see that last several years that expenses have slightly outpaced revenues. And that would be the trend for for the the sewer department. Going to individual line items, we'll go over and highlight some of the line items within the Sewer Department.
If you have any other questions, any other line items, let me know. So for fiscal year twenty-three, we budgeted sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five in contractual. Which is about a four thousand increase from budgeted fiscal year twenty-two. So we budgeted. Two thousand five hundred at the. My notes are off. Let me see here. All right, two thousand five hundred at the wastewater treatment plant, twelve hundred at the pump station. Twenty-two thousand five hundred for sludge removal. That has increased significantly, or not significantly, that's where you're going to see the increase from fiscal year twenty-two. Thirty thousand for the lab, general is at six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. The sludge removal increase is mostly the cost passed on from the vendor due to increasing costs at landfill and then gas. For operating supplies, that line item increased about fifty-five hundred. Mostly in the monies for the wastewater treatment plant itself. Fiscal year twenty-two, we budgeted sixteen thousand eight hundred this year due to some necessary equipment. We budgeted twenty-two thousand five hundred, five hundred dollars for equipment. Seven hundred and fifty for the pump station, fifty-four hundred for the lab, a thousand for tools and a thousand for general. Chemicals have increased significantly from budgeted fiscal year twenty-two at fifty-one thousand six hundred. To this year, we're budgeting sixty-seven thousand. A significant increase in alum. We previously have budgeted. About eighteen thousand. This year, we've budgeted thirty-nine thousand. The vendors charging about thirteen thousand dollars per load. Five hundred for the lagoons, forty-five hundred for caustic, fifteen thousand for methanol. Fifteen hundred for chlorine, six thousand for polymer and five hundred for general. And then repairs and maintenance has stayed about the same. The only change would be about two hundred dollars in the wastewater treatment plant. Everything else has remained the same from the previous year. For about forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Are there any line items that you have any additional questions on?
I have one, um, I don't, I'm seeing on there, but do we still get any revenue for the lagoon?
We, so under revenue, the lagoon revenue is ninety thousand four hundred.
There's still storing there.
Yes.
And that, that slightly goes up each year.
Right.
And that order contract.
So correct?
I'm sorry?
That money goes towards this or playing itself.
Correct.
Yep, goes, it accounts towards the sewer fund revenue.
Commissioner Sweeney partially asked the same question I was going to ask. I missed this earlier when I sent my questions the other day, so I apologize. Part two of my question was that lagoon contract, I can't remember off the top of my head. How long is that contract good for?
So the contract was, it was good for. A set number of years and then it had the option to roll over year to year for the additional three years.
We're not there yet, though, are we?
So the initial is done, the option to roll over. Or to continue year to year. I think we are in the first year of continuing.
Okay.
And this year was the ninety thousand four hundred, and then next year, if it rolls over. I don't know the increase off the top of my head. I'm trying to find it.
Do we approve those options or is that?
Not the options, you approved the initial contract and in the initial contract, it gave a, gave the authority to renew.
Okay. Okay.
Correct.
I wasn't sure if that was done upfront or we had to actually revisit the.
No, those, those, so if it goes past the. If you want, I can pull it up. Here it is. So.
It's coming up, I think, yeah.
Twenty twenty-one, I don't know, here. So the, it was initially. Okay, I have to look at it.
Okay.
All over the place here, but I'll look into that and let you know.
Okay, I, I guess my main, my main thought of that is we're going to eventually come to the point where we're not getting that money anymore. Unless something's renewed, new contract, so.
So there, okay, so they have yearly options up till. Twenty twenty-six, but they have to renew each year. And it's, then the rent increases by three percent.
Yeah, about a ten-year contract, I think it, that sounds about right.
So it caps, so this year is at ninety thousand forty. Next year will be ninety-two thousand seven forty-one.
Okay. I was just thinking ahead there, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. But I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, where are we? Some. Fiscal year twenty-three, current infrastructure projects, we're going to continue with the sewer relining. This, this year, we will look towards federal and DePaul Street. Budgeted amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The Creamery Road Pump Station, as I said, increased by about eight hundred thousand dollars. The USDA loan was one point nine eight million. The USDA grant was eight hundred and sixty-three thousand. The initial town contribution was eight hundred and seven thousand. Ms. Shaw is going, we have a call with USDA. Either the end of this week or beginning of next week to see if there's any additional funding that we could apply for to cover the additional cost. Of the pump station. If not, we will receive the second tranche, tranche of, how are you? Of the American Rescue Plan in September of this year that could be applied to that as well. And then the chem scan upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant, similar to what we did. At the water treatment plant for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, it'll be spread out over those two years in the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars. Any questions on that?
Will we be ready to do that sewer relining? As soon as the new budget year starts?
They typically do the relining in January, January and February is when they do the sewer relining projects. This has to go back out to bid this year, because the board approved a three-year contract with our vendor. So we're going to have to put it back out the bid. Our plan was to put it out to bid, I believe, in August. I think that's what Julie and I talked about. And then they typically want, they put us on their schedule each year for January, February. I don't know if there's a reason behind it. It could be, yeah.
Because every month that's costing us more and more money to treat that wild water. So the quicker we get rid of it, the quicker we're going to start saving more money.
We're working on another source that we believe is of I and I. We, I think we have a meeting next week. Myself and staff, so. We're getting there. All right, so just an update to the pump station. We received the final design documents on April twenty-ninth. The contractors awaiting final major grading and building permit. They still need to submit, submit for the MDE permit. Once they get that, then they'll submit to USDA for final design approval. Again, the cost estimate has increased by eight hundred thousand due increases in material pricing. And the time for construction has increased from three hundred and sixty-five days to four hundred and fifty days due to supply chain issues.
Will the existing structure be removed or just?
The building itself will be moved or will be removed.
Okay, great.
And future sewer lining. Fiscal year twenty-four's anticipated line will probably be West Main Street and Tannery Drive. After that, we'll have to, to reevaluate where we go next.
There are a couple of other budget items we wanted to highlight tonight as things that affect different areas of the budget. One is the pool revenue that we've, that we're budgeting for fiscal, as you can see, fit from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. The budgeted pool revenue is, will go from twelve thousand eight hundred up to twenty-seven thousand one hundred. Good sign as far as the activity at the pool through a couple of lean years, so. Electric budget, wanted to highlight that also. Across the board for the electric budget, as you know, we have the solar fields that we pay for kilowatt use. Each month, the fiscal twenty-two budget is a hundred and eighty, was a hundred and eighty thousand two fifty. The fiscal year twenty-three budget, we've increased that by two percent based on the contracts that we have. For the solar field. So the fiscal year twenty-three budget across the board for the electric line item. Will be a hundred and eighty-three thousand eight sixty. We anticipate this year coming within budget for the electric expense. This chart represents the activity over the last several years. You have last year, want to highlight fiscal year twenty-one. The audited numbers came in at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. This year through the middle of fiscal year twenty-two through December, right about sixty-five, seventy thousand for the year. We should come, like I said, we anticipate being under budget for this year also. Want to highlight with the current inflation rate of eight percent. This is finally coming to fruition where the two percent is a good rate. Considering the inflation that's hit, has hit all the other areas.
See how it's progressed down, the savings and stuff for the, that's what we anticipated.
There's been a lot of time and effort, I know, from the town to try to, to try to have those lowered. This chart represents the town energy expenses over the last several years. As you can see, pretty much been. Steady the last couple of years and we hope to continue that. Moving on to the insurance, as we were saying in the different departments, you can see. A steady increase in each of the insurances that we are paying from year to year. And that trend continues, continues in fiscal year twenty-three with a budgeted amount of forty-two thousand six thirty-five. Here is a listing of our debt obligations that we have in the town that we continue to pay. Each year in the audit, there's a listing in the back that gives you more detail of the debt obligations. I know this past year we've paid off one or two. The. This is the, actually the listing from June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. The first three have to do with the water fund and the last two have to do with the sewer fund. And the new wastewater treatment plant. The next slide represents the, we wanted to share the depreciation for the water fund that will be booked. We anticipate our, our budget for fiscal year twenty-one was a hundred and sixty-three thousand four fifteen. The blue area at the very bottom represents the net assets or the net position. And you can see how the depreciation affects. That number in particular, with the water fund, that amount has increased slightly over the years. And you can see that based upon the revenues and the expenses that have come in for each of the fiscal years. That the net assets of the water fund have slightly decreased over the years. In the sewer fund, you can see the, the depreciation, you can see in fiscal year fourteen and fifteen. And sixteen, that's when the wastewater treatment plant came on board. With the increasing amounts of depreciation, which is right at the very bottom. But the net assets of the sewer fund increased greatly in the fourteen, fifteen period. Because of all the revenue that was received for the building of the wastewater treatment. Waste wa- water treatment plant. Again, with this chart here, down at the bottom, you can see the amount of depreciation, which is in the red. And that gets booked each year. As we obtain assets from year to year, that number increases slightly. You can see in the blue, the amount of net assets are on the, in the audited statements called net position. Right about the, a little bit over the twenty million dollar level, but you can see that there's a slight decrease from year to year. Based upon the depreciation that's booked at year end before the audit's done.
So this is just the chart. Just something we wanted to show you with the remaining sewer and water taps. The top ones in the light blue are taps that have been paid and that are already allocated. So we started with about twelve hundred sewer taps and two hundred and thirty water taps. You'll see that Rutter's is allocated twelve of each, Brookfield with nineteen. Fifty-five Second Avenue, which is the new home was one, and then the Creamery is two each. Federal, and then in the dark blue are taps that are not yet purchased. But we've kind of set aside because these projects are moving forward. Federal Stone with ten taps each, Village Liquor and Plaza with eighteen taps each. And then the future five homes in South Gate would be five each. The ones that the lots are not approved yet, they're just tentative lots. So if you take them into consideration. If they move forward would be Worthing's Court with five homes, Brookfield with the ten homes on Timber Mill. And then Emmett Ridge too, if that comes to fruition would be forty-eight. If all that would occur. You'll see that we are in very good shape with the sewer side at eleven hundred taps. However, your water will be down to a hundred taps. You'll see the calculation of how we get to the taps with the five-year average for sewer and the three-year average for water. We do currently have two wells that the lines are already run to, well J and well seven. However, for them to. Be accessible, we need to build the Emmett Gardens Water Treatment Plant. Estimated cost is well over two million dollars. That's an old estimate. And that would provide the town with an additional four hundred and sixty-eight more water taps. Hopefully we can make these other improvements that we talked about earlier that will put off the need for. The water treatment plant.
So the, the clarifier will bring more taps also make it.
In theory, yes, because the water, through the treatment and the clarifier, then once it moves on, we'll have to use less water for backwash. So we will be wasting less water to clean it, to get it into the plant for treatment.
Hopefully we'll gain some more there.
Right, and that, we, we definitely anticipate that because the backwash water amount will, should significantly decrease.
What is the average cost of a water tap?
Our water tap is eighty, eight thousand two hundred.
So we would be making.
Waters eight thousand, sewers eighty-two.
We'd be making, uh, do that water treatment plant.
Am I backwards?
On, I don't know.
It's sixteen thousand two hundred.
Yeah.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, sewers higher.
Okay. Air eighty-two hundred.
We'd be clear, we'd be making about four million.
So I did have the breakout, you'll see in the growth predictions, I had the breakout of the monies. And that's based off of today's. Tap fees, you know, we do currently have the water and sewer study, it's, it's ongoing. Hopefully we'll have that ready to present. Imagine September.
Moving on, we want to highlight some of the projects that have been completed in fiscal year twenty-two.
So I'll just go over some of these. So the Cedar Avenue Storm Drain Project, as you know, right along the farmer's market. That is an area that's prone to flooding with the recent storms, I think it was last year, South Seaton Avenue was closed for the flooding. So we completed the sewer, Cedar Avenue Storm Drain Project with plans to put in a sidewalk. Making the connection to South Gate in the near future.
With the rocks they put in there, is there any way that they can figure out how to keep them off the road? Because a lot of them have been ending up in the middle of Cedar Avenue. Is, if they put the sidewalk that connects there, will that help with that?
They're just falling into the road or people actually throwing them into the road?
I don't know if they're throwing or people cut that corner hard or what, but I've stopped on several occasions to move them out.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to Jimmy and Zach.
Twelve foot path.
I'll talk to them, see what they can do about it. Included in last year's budget that the board approved was the recycle pump upgrade. The monitoring upgrade at the water plant. I've talked about this countless times. This was such a great investment for the town. It has made the work easier for them, and it's much more precise, much more accurate. This was a great project, and it's similar to what we're going to do if the budget put at the wastewater treatment plant. Some work at the ball fields, the new is that the helmet racks and bat rack? In some of the dugouts, I think Michelle is continuing with that project for the rest of the dugouts. Oh, the new bleachers, the park pavilions, new picnic tables and grills.
Mr. Sweeney, go ahead.
And we did get feedback for the, for the fields from all the other teams that are not from here, because there, we have New Market and Mount Airy and Middletown and all them are coming here to play ball. So and they all love the fields and, and all the grades that were done. They wish theirs was done that way.
Yeah, good. New trash bins that I think Zach got through a grant. The ADA ramp renovations that went throughout the entire town. It was huge undertaking. More. We had the tennis and basketball court resurfaced and pickleball court lines also integrated onto the tennis courts. And apparently there are leagues and groups that you can sign up for, for anybody that's interested. I think we're working on getting some information up on the website. It's free to join. The continued tree planting at the wastewater treatment plant, re-certified for the fourth years, Tree City USA. Some of the improvements through the community legacy project, grants, it's ongoing, it's been a project, the town's been involved with many years. This is for West Main Street. Some of the event, events the town hosted in two thousand twenty-two. National Night Out, the farmer's market, give a plug, if you're a vendor, reach out to Miss Nail. Farmer's Market will start the end of June. Arbor Day Tree Planning, three pool parties, as you see, they're starting to get the pool ready, the water's nice and clear and blue right now. The Mason Dixon Mixon ribbon cutting, the Wayside Exhibit ribbon cutting. I know we also did a Tuscany Pizza ribbon cutting as well as some other businesses that have come to town. The Rutter's Groundbreaking, they, from talking to Zach, they are still believed to be on schedule to open August of this year. The Veterans Day Celebration.
I admire their enthusiasm.
Just relaying. We wanted to show the grants that were applied for in fiscal year twenty-two through Ms. Shaw and Mr. Golden. And you'll see that they were very successful. The only one that was applied for that we did not get would have been through the Department of Housing, Community Development, the Community Legacy for the restroom and concession stand. The pending grants from fiscal year twenty-two that we've applied for that we are still waiting to, to be notified. You'll see for C, Community Parks and Playground, we did continue to seek funding for the or actually that's for the Park Pavilion Rehab in Community Memorial Park. Silo Hill Playground with new equipment and a half basketball court. DNR was the Silo Hill Basin retrofit for two hundred thousand, the Chesapeake Bay Trust for two hundred thousand for Silo Hill Basin retrofit. The through MDE, the Maryland Water Quality Financing for DePaul Street at one point one million and North Seaton Avenue at one point one four million. The Tourism Council Frederick County, the trip grant, which is the Historic Walking Tour brochure and visit Emmitsburg website. The Tourism of Frederick County Trip for advertising for the town, I believe that's where you'll see the signage. I would, Commissioner O'Donnell, if you reach out to Ms. Shaw, she'd be able to tell you exactly what's in that one. Maryland Energy and Administration for the Main Street Streetlight Replacement. And then you'll see the list of program open space that we just submitted for. And the meeting is the end of May that the mayor will have to attend for the Rainbow Lake Parking Lot, the Storybook Trail, a multi-user field behind the town office, the cornhole and the bat and helmet racks. Future grants, these are just sums that, some that we anticipate applying for in fiscal year twenty-three. Will continue to apply for the streetlight replacement through Department Housing, Community Development. Will apply again to Community Parks and Playground. Will apply to the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention for additional license plate readers plus the grant we receive for our contract. The Visit Frederick County Main Street Communities Cooperative Fund, the Tourism Council Frederick, the Department of Housing, Community Development, Town Marketing Plan and Program Open Space. These do not include the ones that Zach intends to apply for, these are all some of Ms. Shaw's grants. Yeah. What we included in your book was the water capital improvement project plan.
It'd be starting on page thirty, it was a supplement that we gave since last.
So this is something that, that we just started last year. Recommendation from some grant funding agencies that asked to see what your capital improvement program is over the course of five years. They're not, these are not steadfast numbers, they do change as revenues increase or expenses increase. So in the first chart, you'll see for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-eight, we estimate the cash reserves and any income that we might get from grant sources such as the pump station grant and loan. The grant from State of Maryland for the water clarifier. Tap fees. The low estimate for fiscal year twenty-three and on. We only budgeted five a year. Five a year, yes, five a year. Just because we don't know where development is. We've had a lot of people inquire about lots, but nobody's moving forward. So we wanted to be cautious. And then you have the American Rescue Plans monies that we received in fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-two, and the monies we'll receive in fiscal year twenty-three. And then most of this you've, we've already gone over, and then you have the debt service for the water fund. The, the Mountain View Road loan will be completed in fiscal year twenty-four. And then the MDE South Seaton will be completed in fiscal year twenty-six. And then you'll see the ones for the sewer fund. Then we'll have a future USDA pump station loan, which will be for forty years. If you move to system upgrade projects, the expenses spread out over the next six years. Where we anticipate the monies being spent, again, these are just our best guesses and anticipated projects. It's not something that's set in stone, it's more of a guideline for the board and future boards to say, hey, this project was important, we're going to put this on the books for the next six years. And you'll see where your cash flow is after the project costs. Page thirty-two is just a short blurb about our future project schedule and funding where we anticipate it coming from. And then on page thirty-three is the growth projections. As you'll see, some of the numbers have changed since we did this last, I believe there's only five homes left in South Gate, is that correct? Brookfield, I think they're down to, all of them have been purchased on Irish Town. And then you have the ten for the zoning map amendment that was approved. And then Emmett Ridge two with a proposed forty-nine and Worthen's Court for five. So you'll see there, that's about a million, about a million dollars for those three future buildable lots. And then we listed the potential future lots of McNair and Fraley. The one seventy-five taps is very low. That's potentially more than that if it would come in. And then your future commercial lots with Federal Stone. Mr. Trout's property and then there's been preliminary meetings with the Mr. Delauter over potentially buying a piece of property over off of federal spy federal stone, potentially putting a warehouse in or a large office building. That's those, and that's all we have. I'll turn it over to Commissioner O'Donnell.
So in front of us, the staff has presented a rather impressive budget, and I think the questions have been spot on. Process wise, if we have further discussion items or questions, we're going to take these on in a moment. Should we be satisfied with discussion items and question items? We would then, with the board's interest, move for consideration. So at this time, are there any discussion items or question items among the commissioners or for the mayor or for staff? Mr. Ritz, we'll start with you, sir.
I guess this might fall under fun two. Under revenues, I, I didn't see anywhere where it was budgeted, anticipated sale of three oh three West Leiken. And then that little piece of property by the wastewater treatment plant, I know we, we met on that a while back. Something, some things were up in the air. Are we anticipating those items, those properties to be sold in this fiscal year?
Christ Community Church, we do not anticipate being sold in this fiscal year, he's extent, he's asked for an extension of of at least one year on his lease, which will go through September of, September of, or October of twenty twenty-three. Yes, twenty twenty-three, so the sale will not happen in this fiscal year at all. Any sale from the property out at the wastewater treatment plant would go into Department fifty, the sewer, because it's located on the sewer property.
Okay.
At this point, I don't believe there's been any further discussion with Mr. Lindsay. So that's, that's where you would see that revenue come in. Okay, if it is sold.
Okay, I wasn't sure what department that would fall under. Okay, that makes sense if it's hard stuff. Okay. So but we don't have it, anything anticipated budget for that?
No.
No.
Anything else, sir?
No, there was some follow-up stuff we talked about earlier, I was gonna, I think you were going to check with Zach or I was going to check with, with Zach.
On the outfall inspections, yes, if you want to reach out to him, I just don't know what he budgeted last year.
Okay, I can certainly do that. And that's all I have at this time, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, anything? I'm good, okay. Mr. Sweeney?
I'm good.
Mr. Burns, no question. All right, so, and I don't have any at the time. Staff, thank you for your, your diligent efforts to present a very well-vetted budget. I think all the questions have been satisfied. So I'll do a straw poll. Board, are we comfortable voting for the budget tonight? Does anybody have any issues or concerns about voting this evening? No?
Well. Yes and no.
Mr. Ritz.
I, I guess I'd like to just have my other. Firstly, I like to have my other questions satisfied. I don't think it's going to hold me up voting wise. But when will we do this? It'll be June sixth, correct?
Um. Let me hold on, so let me see, you know what he budgeted for stormwater last year? Mine's all hidden.
Let me look.
Okay. What was your other question outside of the outfalls?
That was it.
Okay. We're, we're still going to request regardless of what, what that number is, we're still going to request a fifty thousand dollar transfer to fund two for stormwater to cover, to cover the, all the additional expenses. Originally, we were going to do seventy-five thousand, but cut it back to fifty.
Okay, Mike, then my question to that is, would we, if, if we approve the budget with that number, then you would come to us at a later date to officially approve the fund transfer?
No, so the fund transfer is included in the budget, it's a fund two transfer along with everything else that we listed. So like, we asked for the fifty-two hundred, if I'm understanding you right, for like legislative and then the thirty thousand for vehicles and the fifty thousand for paving.
Okay.
Those are all, it's all included in this budget, so if you approve the budget, you approve the fund two transfers. So I would still, regardless of what that outfall number is, I'd still ask for the fifty thousand for stormwater because there may be some issues with the Silo Hill Basin that Frederick County might hold us up on, and there might be increased costs, we don't, just don't know yet.
Okay.
So to have, yes, so I would still ask for that fifty thousand.
But by approving the fifty thousand dollars, then it can be applied wherever needs to be under that account.
Correct, I was just highlighting some of the things that that money would be used for so that you guys had a better understanding. But I'm not just asking for fifty thousand dollars to throw in the stormwater that I have an outline plan to what to use it for.
And I appreciate that, thank you, I, I was my, my ears perked up when you mentioned that outlining thing, I know because the outlier.
I take it back.
The outlays, the, is it outlays, I got the wrong, but no. Because it was, because there was going to be a reduction, because we were overlapping what the county was doing, I just wanted to ensure that that was the direction going forward.
Right, and I can confirm that with Zach, to make sure that that has been reduced because we're not overlapping. I believe that's what has happened. I'll confirm.
Okay.
And you can certainly reach out to Zach also.
I mean, other than that, I mean, the budget's solid in my opinion, I, I, I thought for last year.
I'm sorry.
Okay, you missed a really nice compliment.
Oh.
No, I said, other than that, I said, no, the budget's very solid, I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay, therefore, is there a motion to accept the budget as presented? So moved, thank you, sir. The motion's made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second for his motion? Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney, is there any further discussion related to this item?
Just to make sure the next agenda item, we're approving the budget now, this, does this all tie into this or?
So I was actually just sitting here thinking about that. So this budget is prepared based off the recommended increases in salaries. This is an ordinance has to be we, you have to pass an ordinance to adapt your salary chart, it goes in the code, salary chart's in the code. So yes.
Okay, so if we approve this right now, we can just skip number three.
No.
Technically.
It has to be, it has to be approved by ordinance, I can go over it really quick if you want. But it has to be, the salary has to be approved by ordinance, it's, it's the rules.
Okay, I have no further discussion then.
Okay, so any further discussion items for other commissioners? All right, so call to vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? Motion carries five to zero, aye, sorry, aye. Probably throw that in there, pretty good. Staff, thank you again very much, that was, well, we now move to our item three, Approval of Ordinance twenty-two dash zero six, update to chapter two point five zero point three zero. Salary structure for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. As well, as we turn to you yet again.
Yes, in hindsight, it should have gone before the budget when I was writing them out, it's just, I apologize. So the, as required, we have to adopt our salary chart for each fiscal year via ordinance. So ordinance twenty-two dash oh six basically adopts the salary structure that will apply to this fiscal year. Letter A, you'll see there's, there were some slight changes to the performance standards. The board adopted a new performance evaluation. The board adopted a new performance evaluation that uh has a maximum score of forty instead of forty five. And then it outlines where the merit increases based off of your score on your performance evaluation. And um these increases will take effect July one. And uh, basically says if you receive a score below a twenty four, which we've never had, you do not receive a compensation increase. This is all based off of monies available in the budget. Page nine outlines the salary structure, if you remember, the board adopted, we moved away from the steps and grades and the big long chart to minimums, midpoints and maximums. And um each line item was adjusted by two percent on the minimum end and two percent on the maximum end. Uh, I know in the budget, however, the board, I think at the last meeting, the mayor discussed, it is actually going to be a five percent, it's not considered a cola. The recommendation from H R was due to the, as the mayor mentioned, the ongoing inflation. The recommended or the inflation at eight point two percent that she was seeing the uh colas this year were anywhere between a five percent and eight percent, federal government went with five point nine percent. Uh, the mayor recommended a five percent one-time increase to offset inflation. So it's not considered a cola per se, because it's a one time, it's not something that is going to continue year to year. So that's why the salary structure was only adjusted by two percent on each end to not throw it off for years going forward. So then on this page, you'll see where with each grade from, from one to twelve, where it falls with the minimum, the midpoint and the maximums.
Any questions for staff at this point? Mr. Ritz?
Yes, so the staff evaluations have already been completed for this year, correct?
Yes.
So if we approve this tonight, this will, this will go into effect.
July one.
July one, what about, we had a lot of new hires, um, did they get their performance evaluations, what, what was the cutoff date?
So, so in our, in our um handbook, so Ms. Scott will get her ninety day review next Monday, next Monday.
Oh.
Sabrina will get hers two weeks after that, the following Monday, and then Warren gets his I think this week, I have to get with Dan. So in our handbook, they are not eligible for merit increases because it says you have to be here six months prior, however, they will get the recommended five percent.
Okay, good, so they benefit from it, that was my
Yes, yes.
I don't want to say concern, I was, I'm, I'm happy that they benefit from it, is what I'm getting.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay, good.
Mr. Davis?
No, those all just, oh, no, no employee left behind, we got to make sure.
Sure, consistent. Mr. Sweeney? No? Mr. Burns? No, okay, staff, do you need to push forward or?
Yeah.
Okay.
To approve the ordinance, please.
Okay, but there's no more that you're adding to.
Oh, no.
Okay, very good, okay, um, some quick items and I will, I'm, I'm not here to hold the train up. The goals of these modifications to the salary scale retention in, in view of competition, is that the biggest piece that we're dealing with?
That is the biggest piece, yes.
Um, and this was worked out, it sounds as if it was through our human resources consultant?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And this is something staff wants, no, just kidding, all right, so we move forward. That was funny, you guys can laugh later, I promise you.
I make a motion to accept ordinance um twenty twenty two dash oh six.
Like, because her motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, is there a
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion?
Funny joke.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. Uh, staff, I hope you recognize this is um an acknowledgement of the hard work that we recognize that you guys do every day here. And the stuff that we don't recognize, quite honestly, because so much goes on behind the scenes, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving from there, is there anything for our uh, last piece? Agenda?
We have some additions and changes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, we're good.
Admin business, none. Can, for, this is for Monday, June sixth, admin business, none, consent us items, approval of Free Pool Day on Community Heritage Day twenty twenty two for consideration. And then I'll just, I'll kind of highlight, I think everything's same, number one would be then the Approval of Policy twenty twenty two oh three, the Public Information Act. Uh, number four would be to accept the agreement and right away dedication at five hundred East Main Street for consideration. Number five would be the Approval of Resolution twenty twenty two oh one, Community Legacy Grant Authorization for Facade for consideration. Number six, Approval of Resolution twenty twenty two dash oh two, Community Legacy Grant Authorization for Streetlight Replacement Project for consideration. Number eight, Approval of the Street Sweeping Bid for Consideration.
So this represents the new agenda?
Yeah.
Versus what we discussed in the last meeting, is that correct?
Yes, so from the last one, um, since the board approved the budget and the salary structure ordinance, those two have been dropped. What's new is the Community Heritage Day Free Pool Day. And then I believe the uh resolution for streetlight replacement and the street sweeping bid are just the two new ones, or three new ones, excuse me.
Any concerns regarding the agenda as presented?
Will be done by eight thirty, no.
Don't go saying that, don't think so, all right. Community Day, all right, that's just me, moving forward, um, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, has been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney, is there any further discussion related to this item? Therefore, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five to zero. Very good. With that, staff, anything else, final comments, nothing, very good, okay. Thank you again, staff, greatly appreciated for all we see here and that we don't see here. Uh, moving forward from there, our next meeting is June sixth, and at that, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Is there a second for Commissioners, please, very good, all in favor, please say aye. Very good.
Thank you.